Okay, this time we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We welcome everyone to the boardroom tonight. And we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. And so we'd like to ask everyone to please stand. And we have Andrew Carlton, who is the mayor pro tem with the Old Ford Alderman, not with us. And sir, if you will listen to prayer. Then we have Judge Hunter will listen to pledge after the prayer.
Our most gracious and heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to get together and take care of county business, dear God. We ask that you lead us and guide us, that we do not offend, but we just take care of things that need to be done in your honor and your glory. Go with us throughout the rest of this meeting. Lead, guide, and direct us for it's in Jesus' precious name, with your humbly prayer.
Amen.
Don't mention the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge Hunter, and thank you, Mr. Carlton. All right, commissioners, before you, we have the minutes from five sessions. And when you take action on these minutes, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes as presented? You've had opportunity to read those and review those.
Move, approve, minutes.
Second discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, light side. Okay, thank you, commissioners. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions by staff or board members? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board concerning approval of tonight's agenda?
Most approved, agenda's presented.
Six. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, light side. Okay, we'll go ahead and start. We're about eight minutes early, but listen, we've got Nora Coffey with us and the esteemed Judge Hunter with us and whomever else is here tonight concerning the Friends of the Lake James State Park and the update we're going to receive. Y'all come forward, and we're so glad to have you here with us tonight. And I always look forward to seeing friendly faces who are busy helping to preserve our natural environment. So Nora, the floor is yours. And Judge, good to see you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners and everybody else who's here. Is this on? Do I need to be speaking into it?
You are. You're being recorded, and it is on.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for having us. It seems like it's been, well, it's probably been a year or more since we've been here. And I just want to give everybody an update of what's going on at the park. Even in those slow winter months, we are busy little bees, just making repairs, making upgrades. It's hard to believe that the Paddies Creek section has been open for nine years now, and that's already needing some repairs and upgrades, which can only tell you how much we need to be doing at the Catawba River area. So our beloved old park has been very busy. We are constantly working over there. It may be 600 or so acres compared to the 3,000, but it has our busiest campground. The Catawba River area campground continues to be our most popular campground. People love their beloved lakeside campsites, and we've been busy over there. In the last few years, I'm just going to go down the list of all the repairs and upgrades we've made. We installed a campground host site, and it sounds like for Lynn Green here to come and be one of our campground hosts, hopefully in the near future. And that's, that just helps, help us up our amount of customer service, the interactions with, with visitors and campers to the park, giving them the goods and services they need, making sure that they're actually seeing somebody and making contact and getting all the information they need. So we've added a campground host site. We've done repairs and upgraded the septic system. We've replaced the roof and gutters at the office, the campground shower house, as well as the roof on the picnic shelter. The campground bathhouse at the Catawba River area campground went through a complete inside renovation. The state spent over $42,000 on that renovation, so nice new bathrooms over there. Grills were replaced in the campground, new doors and frames at the day use area bathrooms and office. Sandy Cliff and Lake Channel overlooks were completely rebuilt, torn down and rebuilt this past year. And the fishing pier, this was a long time coming, the fishing pier was completely redact. And we did that with the help of the Forest Service, the North Carolina Forest Service Bridge Program. They have a construction section, and so we got to use some of their labor and guide them. So it was a great teaching project. We, we got, really got a lot more bang for our buck. So we paid for materials, and we had labor from the Forest Service to help us complete those. So we did that through last fall and through the winter. And if you guys are getting and looking at our newsletter, I brought some extra copies, but our January, February 2019 newsletter shows the Lake Channel overlook on the front cover that was completely rebuilt. And then I also have a picture of the Sandy Cliff overlook with some of the workers who, who worked on that. I did not print out the fishing pier, so you'll have to go out there and throw a pole in the water to see that one. I also brought a variety of other newsletters from the past year, so that way we can pass them around and make sure everybody's keeping up. All the good stuff is in there. So upcoming and ongoing projects that we have, and again, we're focusing on the McDowell project section of the park. We hope to be painting the exterior of the buildings, the office and the campground, bathhouse. The exterior is due to be repainted, so hopefully we'll get funding from the state for that soon. The picnic area and campground individual sites will continue being upgraded as they degrade. We've been pulling out grills, and we're just not getting the grills in fast enough. Turns out it's easier to pull them out than to replace them. And then a new entrance sign. So when we put in the Paddies Creek area, the entrance, the design of the entrance sign and the front gate was a little bit different than the old park. And so we are upgrading that sign, and I'm happy to say that we were able to use a local Marion business. Turtle Laboratories did the, has already made the lettering for us, and we picked that up. And then we have a rock mason who will come out and rebuild the structure of the sign. So hopefully we'll see that before the end of summer. If not, because we'll have to close down one lane coming in, visitation's been kind of crazy, so we may have to wait till fall, but that'll definitely happen before the end of the calendar year. And that brings me into some updates about attendance. I went ahead and pulled some numbers. I went back about a decade, but just looking at the last five or six years or so, we've been steadily climbing five, 5,000 or so people a year. We are averaging over 100,000 visitors just at the Catawba River area of the park. Parkwide attendance, and this, we, we take readings at the Canal Bridge access, the Hidden Cove boat access, both Paddies Creek and the Catawba River. So more accurate, specific data on those areas for the last five years. And Catawba River area, like I said, over 100,000 visitors a year. Park totals are close to 600,000 a year. So that's, like a fifth of that is coming from the Catawba River area. And that doesn't include, Hidden Cove access is also in McDowell County. And if you've been by there on a holiday weekend, I don't recommend it, but it's overflowing. They're parking on the road shoulders and everywhere. If you've been past Canal Bridge, Hidden Cove is every bit as busy. It's just, it's not as big of a parking lot, but it needs to be. I don't know that we have the space, but it's well-loved. On weekdays, we get a lot of folks parking there just because it is nice and quiet and hidden, and you don't have all the boat traffic, you're not out in the main channel. So that, that remains to be very popular as well. And I know I said this when I was here in the past, when I first became superintendent about six years ago, almost every week I had our McDowell residents coming to walk their dogs in the park or running in the park, coming to the campground. And everybody was afraid that we were going to close down that section of the park. But now I'm happy to report that I have less of those questions and more people noticing the upgrades. They're noticing the overlooks and the piers. They're noticing the work we did at the bathhouse. And hopefully they continue to see that. They're recognizing that we are doing, doing work to keep it up, upgraded there. We are also renting out the swim beach, the old swim beach. I get, that's probably the only disappointing question I get, is people want to know, why can't we swim here for free? I try to explain the public swim area move, but we have this great asset here. You can rent it out for, we get a lot of birthday parties, graduation parties, church groups, youth groups, family reunions, corporate picnics. And we, we went from about the first couple of years, maybe 10 reservations to 20, and now almost every weekend that old swim beach is run it out. So it's a, it's a great asset, a great thing for us to have, to be able to have a section of the park that you could rent out for, for a family or group event. So yeah, just attendance just keeps rising. We keep getting more and more busy. We have folks who maybe don't want to swim and just want to picnic on those busy weekends, those hot weekends. And so having the Catawba River area has been wonderful. In fact, when we build the visitor center, my office is going to be moving to the Paddies Creek area, and I'm really going to miss the old park. But I still live near, really close by, so I'll, I'll still get to spend a lot of time there. Just to give an idea of how many people visit the Catawba River area on a given weekend, typical, a busy weekend when Paddies Creek is, swim area is just about full, Catawba River area is still pretty hopping. We bring in 15, I checked back at visitation on busy weekends the last two, three years, and weekends bring in, this is Saturday and Sunday combined, about 1,500 to 2,000 people come in, and that's campers coming and going, that's people coming to hike the trails, go fishing. And again, that's just at the Catawba River area. The holidays, the past three or four Memorial Day weekends, 3,000 to 5,000 people just in that three-day weekend at the Catawba River area. So it's still very popular, and I'm so happy that we're able to still provide that for the, the people of McDowell County and from outside the county. I think that's it for updates. Does anybody have any questions before I hand it over to Judge Hunter?
Nora, it sounds like you've been busy.
We have been busy.
From grills being replaced, to facades being painted, to just assisting people with questions they've got. You did a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, and I couldn't do it without my staff. I only, still with all of these, we went from 20 campsites to 83 campsites in one year in 2016, and my permanent staff grew by zero. It still takes a lot to keep that up. We do bring on quite a few seasonal staff, but of course, as you can imagine, with the swim beach at the Paddies Creek area, it takes most folks over there. We've started to dedicate maintenance folks to the Catawba River area. It's, it's well grown over, lot of nice shade trees, which lose a lot of leaves. They spend probably nine months out of the year, every day they're out there blowing by hand off the road and the parking lots. We also couldn't do it without the Friends of Lake James State Park, just a handful of things that they've done for us. They, they put our lifeguards through training. They built picnic sites at the Linville Overlook, assisted with funding and construction of the Overmountain Victory Trail. And I know Judge Hunter was actually out there helping with, with some of the picnic sites being put in. They annually fund upkeep of the Holly Discovery Trail. They've, they've, I think, promised we get up to $1,000 a year for upgrades to that. Not that we've needed that much, but they've, they've promised that much for us. They've sponsored Park of the Year Celebration, our annual River Fest, night rides on the mountain bike trails, and boat camping out, out at the Long Arm Peninsula. And most recently, they've hired a grant writer for us and have helped us get a lot of extra funding that we needed for the visitor center. I think to date, we've gotten over $60,000 in grants to assist with the visitor center and more, more to come, hopefully. So I will hand it over to Judge Hunter.
Thank you, Nora. Nora's, Nora's done a wonderful job out there. We've been blessed with superintendents, and so we are most fortunate with that. I'm vice chairman of the, of the Friends Group. Also here, Mike Sewell is secretary of our group. Molly, who y'all know, is on our board. And Annette Bryant is on the board, and Jim Williams, and Randall Connolly, who I think y'all know well, is on the board. Our, our mission, and we have 200 members now, is to do the things that the state can't or doesn't do. I say, I won't say won't do, they'd like to do it, but you know how things like that are. So we fill in when there's a need, and Nora needs something that the state can't do. And so, and before I make my pitch, I want to point out something. We're talking here about McDowell County and what is going on there at the Catawba side. And obviously, the, the Paddies Creek side is newer, and we have more land there. That's all we could get. That's all Crescent and Duke Power would let us have when we built the Catawba side. But people come into this area, they don't think about Burke County or McDowell County. They're coming to Lake James State Park. And it's probably the biggest asset that we've got in these two counties, that lake and the use of that, of that facility and the park down there. And it's amazing. And everything is first class. And we're getting ready to have a groundbreaking for the visitor center. The bids are going to be opened on the 19th, and so we'll be scheduling a groundbreaking. And certainly y'all will be invited. It's, it's going to increase the number of people tremendously that are going to be coming to the park. It's already a tremendous number. We have a lot of mountain biking people. The one thing we don't have yet, that we, it's our next project, everything else is funded, is the section for RV campsites. That's the biggest request that we get, and that's going to be helpful. The other thing I would point out is we've got a lot of land on the Catawba side across the road, from the lake club on down to the right, down to the, actually to the bridge. That, or to the road there, that's a part of the park. We're hoping in the near future to get a new master plan that will help us decide what should, that area should be used for. And we're going to be asking for suggestions from the public as to what they would suggest. So we do have that. That's still in the McDowell County, and it's, it's, what, 500 acres or something like that?
It's several hundred acres on the south side.
Yeah. So there's a lot of land there, and so we're hopeful of that. But of course, I told Ashley, and we're down for an appointment, but it ought to say a request and a plea. We came before you last year, and we gave an update, and we had a request, and, and we asked for some money for that leaf blower that's used primarily in the McDowell side. And unfortunately, we weren't funded. So we're, we're here to beg again. We would request to be included in the budget for $5,000 recurring each year, and that would give us the money to do the things to help. And we obviously would prioritize that money being spent in the Catawba side, if you are gracious enough to, to fund that. And, and we also plan on going to the Tourism Commission to ask them, because that park probably brings in more people into the county, that lake and that, and that park than any other thing that we have. So anything that we can do to bring in more people is going to help the counties, help tourism, helps the tourism dollars, helps the sales tax dollars. So we think it's, we think it's a good investment. And that leaf blower would be a really wonderful addition that goes on a tractor instead of them having to get out there and try to blow those parking lots with a hand blower. So we would certainly appreciate if y'all could do that. We think it would be money well spent, and we would love to, to be able to get that and anything else that we get, any money we get gets spent in that park. Everything that we get, and so it would be a good investment. And like I said, when that visitor center, which probably would be ready, hopefully maybe this time next year, they should be breaking ground by the fall. It's going to really be something. And besides that, that, there'll be a parking lot that will serve the bike area also, the mountain biking. But there's going to be a bridge across Long Point, Long.
Long Arm and.
Long Arm, where the, the only boat-in campsites are over there on that Long Arm Point. And this is going to be a pedestrian bridge that'll go over there, and that's going to increase a lot more. The other thing we've got, she didn't mention, we've got a, Duke Power has given us a boat dock. Right now, at the beach area, there's no place for people to boat. They have to bring it in and beach their boats. This will be, hopefully, our staff will be able to put it together, and it'll be there. It's ready. It's been to Florida, it's been refurbished, and now it's waiting on our staff to, to get it done. And we'll probably help with that as well. Any, any questions that I might could answer, if you've got any more? Hey Cheryl, I didn't get to say hello to you.
Judge, you've got 200 members, you're volunteer time, you care about the lake, you're providing just another extension of what the state can't do, that, as you said, they would like to do at times. And hats off to your organization. I mean, you, you guys, men and women, are going the extra mile, and, you know, you did throw in that request and plea, I did, we did catch that right there, as you did mention that. And I'll just say this, Judge Hunter's always so kind in, in how he approaches people with requests, and so it's, it's kind of hard to say no to a man that's kind to people like that, Judge.
Nora, how long have you been with, with the park down there now?
Um, 12, just over 12 years. I've been superintendent for six.
Okay. When I first started patrolling the lake down there for the sheriff's office, I think you were just coming in down there then. And I've got to say that the number of years that I worked down there, a super group of people to work with. And you know, you, you might expect in some places that when visitors come in, or even county people visit the place, that you're a little bit hesitant, are they going to take care of it or not? But they have, and that, I think that says something for McDowell County. They want, when they, when they want something like that, a place to go to enjoy with their family, they will take care of it. So hats off to everybody.
We have a wonderful staff. We got one that's getting ready to retire, that's been there since it opened.
Yeah. Ranger Weaver is getting ready to retire in the fall. He's been there just about 30 years.
Kevin just got promoted from here to go to Mount Mitchell, to take over Mount Mitchell. Of course, Sean was the.
Superintendent.
Superintendent before now, he's the district superintendent, so. And this park is well thought of in Raleigh, it really is, the people down there. They always come up, their leadership comes up, and they know.
Thanks so much, y'all. Thanks for the update and just bringing the board abreast of all the great things happening down there in and around the lake and what your organization does to help. So we appreciate the job you do.
Thank you. I'll pass these around if you guys want to share them.
And for anybody watching, if you want to be a friend of the Lake James group, see Nora or Judge Hunter. They'll give you information. You can donate and take an active role in, in helping with preservation and activities around the lake.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, and this will be item B on our appointment agenda tonight. This is the Old Ford facade program request. Mr. Carlton, come back, sir. Good to have the vice mayor with us. And Mr. Wood, can you lead us out on this topic, okay?
Sure. Quickly, Mr. Chairman, probably eight or nine, maybe longer than that, years ago, the city of Marion initiated a facade improvement program in the downtown area. And this is something they started based on requests from local businesses. I think they had seen a model elsewhere in the state. And after a couple of years, they asked for assistance from, from MEDA, the McDowell Economic Development Association, which is primarily funded by the county as well as private contributions. And so a couple of years ago, MEDA started funding to a small degree, relatively small degree, a portion of Marion's program. And now Old Ford has expressed interest in starting a program and is here to request essentially a MEDA contribution from county funds. So that's why it's really originating with the county, but it's going through, through MEDA since they're the economic development agency for the county.
Okay, Mr. Carlton.
All right. Thank you for having me. If you don't know me, my name's Andrew Carlton. I'm a mayor pro tem of Old Ford. I'm also part of MEDA on the board, and I work with Iso Thermal, board of directors there. I've been working with Chuck Abernathy for almost a year on this facade program for Old Ford, and I finally got the board to approve it. And we're looking to set aside a line item of $15,000, and it's been approved for the next coming year budget, and starting in July. Since we do not have a business association, Steve Bush in the chamber have graciously offered to help fund with $2,500. I talked with Carol Price, and she took it before TDA, and they are going to match that with 2,500. And I'm looking, I've talked with Chuck Abernathy. He's set aside about $2,000 that could help us in that same fund, provided it's approved for y'all, by y'all. And I've sent copies of the new facade to Ashley, and I think y'all have got copies. If not, I've got some here. This is a great benefit to the small businesses in Old Ford. As you know, Old Ford needs a facelift. And a lot of the small businesses there, if they can afford to do a facade and upgrade their, upgrade their storefronts, this is a way that they can get up to $3,000 to go towards windows and paints. And if they don't want to do that, it'll pay up to 50% of the labor. But it's, it's a line item of 15,000 at a $3,000 maximum per business, and when the funds are depleted, then we'll go on to next year. And I just humbly request that y'all approve that money that has been set aside by MEDA that would help us to fund this facade program.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Wood, anything else you need to add?
Just a quick addendum, maybe. These funds are put into private infrastructure, yes, but it's taxable infrastructure. So if someone says, why are you giving county money for private buildings? You have a building reuse program that's been very successful in an industrial setting. This is more of a commercial, but it has multitude of benefits as it relates to the tax value of properties, which helps us, obviously, but it also helps the vitality of the city, and I'm sure with the town, too.
But also, too, the, anyone that does receive the grants will get a 1099. It's not tax-free, so they, they will be taxed, so. But it's just a great, a great thing for the town to sort of help these small businesses. And we've also re-implemented the planning board, and that's one thing I'm going to turn over to the planning board. And as you can see by the general grant information, what they're going to be required to do to get this grant, along with a copy of the application. But I just think it's a great opportunity for the small businesses to do this.
Yeah, you can look at Marion, and you know, being a property owner downtown, sometimes a little boost in arm to, and a little money goes a long way. And you can see that that program has been in operation, what, about nine years now? And we have people come in, I know from out of town, that drive through our main street, and they say, hey, the town's beautiful. And, and so that's good that Old Ford is ready to move forward and help make that more attractive, because with the, with us being, coming out of the Lake James Friends of the Park conversation, we've got, we're part of the Pisgah National Forest. I mean, the most visited federal park in the nation. So we've had people coming through here, trails going out, master plans, working on all kinds of things to bring people in. And if they see a building that has got paint peeling off, they're less likely to go into that building.
Absolutely.
But if it's nice and attractive and neat and clean, they'll be more likely to stop in there, so.
Well, this is just one step, I think, towards a Main Street program for Old Ford. And we've had a, a meeting with the North Carolina Commerce Department and did an, an assessment of the town. I think Randall was there with us then. There's a lot going on in Old Ford, and we're just, we're just trying to get it up and going. The tax rates are still very, very low, and we can thank that to the previous administration that dropped them 10 cents a hundred, which we've been putting Band-Aids on everything, and it's hard to go back and raise the tax rates. But something will have to give there. But anything that we can do to show that the townspeople, that the town has skin in the game, this is part of it.
Okay. Other comments, questions by board members? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve request, release the $2,000 for Old Ford facade.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. And opposed, light side. Okay, Mr. Carlton.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving me the time.
The board of commissioners looks forward to partnering at any and every opportunity, step of the way with you guys down there, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's go ahead and tackle old business item A, the WBRM lease agreement. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. This is something you have seen previously as essentially a first reading. This would lease space on the Grants Mountain Tower that the county owns. It's a five-year lease with WBRM Incorporated for $200 a month, and this would allow It's a five-year lease with WBRM Incorporated for $200 a month, and this would allow the FM transmitter to stay there and to keep broadcasting their-
Move, we approve the lease.
Okay, you got a motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay? Let's see, what time you got?
5:28.
5:28.
B.
All right, let's go ahead and do item B under old business, 226 South Property Annexation Request.
You, thank you, you have an email from Mr. Kadir, that is the developer of the Holiday Inn Express, that is now under construction there at exit 86. You'll recall that quite a while ago, the county granted an easement to that property, and so the entrance road and associated utilities cross county property to get to the hotel in any future development. The developer has asked the city of Marion to annex, they've annexed all the commercial property already, but when the question of road maintenance came up, the city said they cannot maintain by law roads outside of their municipal limits. But the little section between 226 and the commercial property is county property, and therefore they can't technically maintain it. And so the developer, having learned that, has asked if they would consent for the easement area to be annexed into the city. I talked to the city manager if that was an issue, if the board consented. So they said they would annex as small as area that would benefit the property, the commercial property. They would annex any buildings connected to utilities if you're interested, or none at all. So it's really up to you. So the 60-foot easement area, sort of, let's make a deal, maybe, 60-foot easement area, county facilities connected to city utilities, or none at all, is sort of the request.
Okay, well, I would favor the 60-foot easement area enough to get that annexed in, which is basically the request. Anything beyond that, I'm not looking to voluntarily move forward with that right now, myself. Other board members?
I'm getting the 60-foot.
Okay. All right, do we hear a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the request for the 60-foot 226 property, this request by the city. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay, this time we'll move to item C on our appointment schedule. This is the 2020 budget public hearing that is required by law for the board to hold. So pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 159-12, I would declare the board in a public hearing setting at this time to receive comment on the budget that's being advertised. So we'll go ahead and start on this side of the room. Is anybody present who wishes to speak concerning the budget as proposed to the board? Okay? This side of the room. Okay? Do we hear a motion?
Motion, go ahead, public hearing. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. You fulfilled your requirement as far as the hearing, and just for folks' benefit, the budget presentation has been available in the clerk's office. We've provided information online as well. Again, just to recap, the proposed budget for next year is $45,442,843 for next year. You have until midnight on June 30th to approve the budget. Prior years, the boards have passed at the night of the hearing, some years they've waited until later if there was thoughts that things may change with maybe external agencies, with the legislature, you never know. So it's really up to y'all. If you wanted to approve it tonight, you can. If you wanted to wait a week or two, or three weeks, maybe not three weeks, but close to, that would be your option.
Okay, comments, questions by board members? I think the board, I appreciate the board, I know that the commissioners have asked lots of questions to staff and read the document and really sought to make sure that any requests that each commissioner was aware of was addressed, if possible. So I'll just say it's an honor to be the chairman of this board that really takes their job seriously and goes after and looks at these things. You know, we get, all these documents we get, and, you know, I know you take time to really examine them, so thanks to our board. Now, I have no problem moving forward with it. If you're gonna approve it, there's no need to, in my opinion, to delay. If you're satisfied and y'all can state your opinion, I only entertain a motion to-
I'd go ahead and make a move that we adopt the budget as it's been presented.
Okay, you got a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay? All right, thank you, commissioners. Let's move to item C under old business. This will be the Charters of Freedom and the Courthouse loan update. And I will say that with all the work being done to the courthouse, the new addition of the courtroom and the renovations, that is looking good up front when you come up Main Street and the replacement of the monument, the new Charters of Freedom monument that's going in now, and it looks really good. Mr. Wood, anything you wanna go ahead and bring us up to date on?
Just quickly, I'll point out in your packet, the public can't see it, but there's a great picture of the Charters of Freedom that, to give credit to McDowell News, that we put in the packet so you could see the work, just to make sure they got credit for that. But the work does look great. Terry De Poister is here and his staff did a great job overseeing the work with the new plaza there. Again, it started with the Charters of Freedom, and once that was, orientation was settled, the decision was made by the board to reorient the war memorial and place a new flagpole. So that really turned out to be just a nice area and is very worthy of that dedication coming up on the 21st, which is open to the public. It will be primarily facilitated by the Charters of Freedom Foundation, but the commissioners will be doing the welcome and program and so forth, but there will be a speaker from Foundation Ford that Friday. Again, that's June 21st at 10:00 a.m. there at the plaza there in the front. There will be comments by the board members, special music hopefully, and presentation of colors and so forth, but just a great recognition of that dedication and the donation of those settings.
Okay, and we encourage, that's a public event, and we encourage everybody to come out to that and help us dedicate the reminders of where America began at and our origins, and we need to never forget that there's, just coming out of D-Day Invasion last week and the ceremony at the Carson House, there's men and women who sacrificed their very lives so we can meet here tonight, and we need to always remember as a nation where we came from and how we got here, and the sacrifices by many men and women who've gone before. So, I mean, America has been blessed with, you know, those men who stormed those beaches we, and just coming out of that ceremony the other day, a lot of them didn't even have a chance to marry and have kids and be fathers and, but they were ready to go when the call came. And so we're gonna do this to try to remember even going back predating that, but just the resolve that Americans have, and we wanna always do what we can to promote that as commissioners. And I know Lynn, you is very, you're very instrumental in conversation when this first began, anything you wanna add?
I'd just like to echo what the chairman has said, and this is not something for the county commissioners or for county employees, this is for McDowell County citizens. It's something that we need to make sure that we've got as many young people there as we can and that they're educated on what our country is actually founded on. A lot of folks say things about the Constitution and they say, well, it's just a piece of paper. Well, no, it's not. If it weren't for that piece of paper, you wouldn't have the right to say that it's just a piece of paper. So it's just that simple. And we need to educate our young people on where this country started and what it's actually founded on.
Okay. Other commissioners, any comments? Okay. All right, so we look forward to that on June 21st at 10 o'clock, so make plans to be there for that dedication. And this time, let's move to item A under new business. This is board appointments, and there's no action to be taken by the board tonight. There are three first readings, the planning board, McDowell Tech Board Trustees, and the jury commission, so we'll have these on for next month, and we'll go ahead and vote then at that time. Let's go to item B under new business. This is to sell sheriff's office firearms. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. You have a request from the sheriff's office to sell 19 surplus firearms, and you have the resolution in front of you. You're authorized to dispose of firearms by private sale, but we have to have a value on those firearms like any other property that you would sell. And so we did get values from, I think, three different dealers and see the attached memo on those per weapon values. So the total would be about $2,500 from the proceeds of the sale, and that would go into the purchase of new firearms for the sheriff's office.
Okay, comments, questions?
Lynn, reading this, it says that these firearms are obsolete, of no use to the sheriff's office, and the listed firearms would be sold to only current and retired sheriff's office employees, so I'm good with that, as long as they're gonna be sold back to the ones. And I understand we have one deputy that carried the same weapon for 30 years, and he'd like to purchase his, and I'd like to see that happen.
Yes.
Okay, other comments, questions?
I'd move that we approve the resolution.
Okay, got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay, let's go to item C under new business. This is administrative items. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir, and lead us out.
Yes, sir. You have five project budget ordinance amendments. That's for the Baxter Healthcare Building Reuse Grant, the Stacy Hill Road Waterline Project, the Courthouse renovation and addition project, the Crane Resistiflex Building Reuse Grant, and the Ethan Allen Building Reuse Grant. We'd ask if you approve each of those five amendments.
Okay, comments, questions by board members? All right, there being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the ordinance amendment. Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay?
You have budget amendments, starting with GF 67, then goes to Enterprise 4, Enterprise 5, Transit 1, FD 2, and Reval Fund 2. I can read each and every one of those if you'd like.
Move that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. For anybody watching, this seems like this is moving very fast through this little segment right here, but the board has had these documents and has had opportunity to review these, so it's not like we're looking at it for the first time right now. So just so everybody knows that there is homework and these are checked out before we take action on them, okay?
It's about 200 pages a month.
Yeah, at least.
There's only 91 this time.
Yeah, I know, it's small, there's not-
At least. Okay, Mr. Wood, anything else on this item?
No, sir.
All right, let's move to item D under new business. This is tax matters. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. You have just a few, we're right at the end of the year, a few releases, rebills, refunds from the tax office, and should pretty much close out the year.
Okay, comments or questions by board members? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move that we approve the tax matters as presented.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay? Now, let's go to our next item on our agenda for tonight, and that is citizen comment. And if anybody is present who wishes to speak, we would love to hear you and just come up and just write your name down and your topic, and we'll get to you. All right, anybody else that's here tonight wishes to speak? We don't mind a bit, we are, we are your representatives and we want to hear from you. And that's what we exist, to receive input and to try to make things the best they can be in McDowell County for our people. So there being none, at this time, are there reports, communications, anything staff needs to bring commissioners up to date about, or vice versa?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Okay?
Public Rescue Association back with Saturday. I don't know if we got invitations out or not to the commissioners, but it may not be. They've probably forgotten.
Who is it?
Saturday, 5:00, right there, at McDowell High School Cafeteria. I bet they missed, like, what time? 5:00, 5:00, 5:00 to High School Cafeteria.
This Saturday is also the 4H District Activity Day, and that's the first time in about 20 years that this has been held here. And then Chairman Walker's gonna be speaking.
Actually, I did tell you about that. I'm glad you reminded me. I'll be out of town, I can't tell you when I leave, knowing everybody that's watching, but I will be out of town.
I know Vice Chairman Brown's gonna be back, and he was gonna go to somebody-
He can speak on behalf of the board then, that's good. Good.
And it's open for anyone, but the presentations start at 10:30, and Chad Ray wanted me to turn my on, and lunch will be about 9:00, so.
And I do wanna recognize, I see several staff members present tonight in the room. Terry De Poister is our Public Service Director, and Terry does an excellent job. We have our Finance Director here, Allison, she keeps, she keeps the county between the lines like we should be at all times. And we have Ron Harmon, who is our Planning Board Director slash lots of other things title, we really haven't settled in on yet, but he's here, too. So anyway, and plus, too, good to see Howard, the quote-unquote not mayor, but is the mayor of Kruger Creek with us tonight, and always good to see him, and our press is here tonight, Mr. Conley, and always good to have law enforcement in case anything happens, they're always present, so hats off to their sheriff's department, great job they do day in, day out. With that being said, I dare hear much adjourn this meeting. We've conducted all the business on our agenda tonight.
Move, we adjourn.
Now they won't say it for Michael's sake. I will say of this, so we close the meeting now, discussion, all in favor, say aye.